Here.
Mr. Eggenberger.
Here.
And Chairman Green is here, and we have, sorry, Commissioner O'Conne, Commissioner Perkins, Commissioner Gobson.
And of course, there were planning staff at the way, and Patrick Sloan. And welcome to you all tonight. But I'd like to take a couple of minutes just because I've got some kind of sad news, very sad news. Longtime Commissioner Elizabeth Loughlin, and I'm not sure who knows her very well, but she's very, very greatly helped. She's served in many, many capacities with the township, and the township is very grateful for the service that she's done. She was on this panel for what, what was it?
Twenty years.
How many?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years, and she was a trustee, she was a treasurer, I mean, pretty much anything that was happening within was changed. Elizabeth Loughlin was somewhere around and involved in it. So, a lot of what we see around us today has contributed to a lot of her involvement and input, and we're grateful for that. Today, I just learned that another longtime Commissioner Sue Gadsden is greatly helped as well. And she also spent a lot of time working with this panel, and with Melissa, actually, I worked with both of them. Sue actually served a couple of times. She was here a long time, and then she left for a while, and then came back.
On ZDA, and she was on partnership for the ARS.
Yeah, so both those ladies really contributed a lot to improve development and her career and so forth. Okay, we last met February 30th, and associated with that meeting.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and acceptance.
It's a word I meant.
But you said accept. So, by Commissioner Eggenberger. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and we have an agenda tonight of two items. Any late additions from staff? Anything from the commission? Hearing none, seeing none. Do I hear a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Bennett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Our first agenda item tonight is a site plan. We are considering a site plan approval for the HDDS or Canton Dermatology Building Phase Two. This property is located west of Canton Center Road and north of Cherry Hill Road. Jeff, could you give us more detail?
Yes, well, we'll get the image back up.
Turn your mic on, or?
Yes, the, this is phase two of what they've called the Canton Acreage Parcel or the HDDS. We've got the initial building up is the image on the screen. This is just west of Canton Center, north of Cherry Hill. The building, the brown building in the lower kind of center portion of that is the existing building. That's the U of M Dialysis Clinic. The proposed building is the one in the upper left-hand corner for Canton Dermatology. It's a second phase of a, you know, four, you know, four-building project. This is basically for their practice as the next phase. So essentially, they've added additional parking, they've added additional landscape buffering along the west side adjacent to the residential area, and they've added the landscaping along the north portion of their site along Canton Center Road. You'll see on this that they do not propose to bring a driveway out to Canton Center Road at this location. That may be a future phase determination depending on what use goes in that future phase. But right now, they're still planning on using the Boulevard entrance south of the bank that accesses the current parking lot. So the architecture of the building is very similar to the original building. This is just a little bit bigger building. Let's see if I can. So very similar features to the original building with the dormers, the shed, the metal roof features over the dormers. Kind of the same brick and our end window style as the existing building. So we have, the project sponsors are here if you need to answer any questions. Again, you kind of saw this with the first phase. They have the future kind of phases laid out on a separate sheet in the site plan. You'll kind of see how that goes forward. I tried to convince them to kind of lay out all of the phases so I wouldn't have to bring it back four times, but they weren't ready to do that, so.
Welcome.
Welcome. Hi, I'm Bill Knighton from the Manic Smith Group, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. We would appreciate your approval this evening. It's an 18,000 square foot building, 130 spaces, new spaces, so like Jeff said, you know, a nice buffer on the west side between the residential and the parking lot in the building. And the building's the same, same aesthetically, the same as the existing building, same flavor, the brick, and it's extremely nice. So, any questions you may have, we're here to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome.
I'm going to go to the commission right off the bat. Start down on this end. Commissioner Ocharia, did you have any?
No questions at this point.
Commissioner Graham Hudek.
Yes, I'm just wondering, because we're seeing a lot of these types of buildings coming in, so did you do a market study to determine how you, much you wanted to expand and when, or how are you determining your?
Well, they have three existing facilities in Canton, HDDS Dermatology does, so they're going to consolidate to this building. They will own, excuse me, they will own this building. The other three, they currently?
Rent two, we own one.
They rent two and they own one. So they're going to consolidate to one facility.
Architecture that it does right now, correct? That's what you were saying? Okay. And I was wondering, so Jeff, did we, when something like this happens, are they request, required to notify the neighbors and ask more question, or just invite them in, or no?
This happened quite a while ago. This is a permitted land use in the district. There's no requirements that they contact them, or there's not a requirement for a public hearing. We just make sure that the buffer requirements and the ordinance and the landscaping, you know, requirements are met along that property line. So this is essentially a one-story building, so the active part of the building is facing south, so it's just the side of the building facing the residential area. They're not adding another dumpster. They're going to consolidate the trash use and the existing dumpster in the parking lot, so there shouldn't be an additional impact.
Ms. Zuber?
No questions.
There are some residents here if you want to take comments. It's not a public hearing, so that's up to the chair if he wants to take comments, so.
Okay. I have some questions about the future.
Don't we all?
Jeff has already alluded, I was going to ask about the trash enclosure. So it's been deemed that, you know, both facilities can utilize that successfully, so that's not an alarming thing. I was expecting a second one to be added with this development, but if it's not necessary, it's not necessary. But I'm more concerned with the future development on the north side, on the east, because there's going to be another building there, but you're, for this development, you're going to be utilizing more parking in that area, and then changing it later for future development. This has already been planned out, because my concern with all of this is it's just a lot going on in here, and once it's built, it's landlocked and could present a parking problem in totality once everything's built out in the future down the road. This has already been thought of, you know, to the north there. Okay, so where you've, where you're going to put the new parking for this?
Right.
This building?
Right.
Some of that is going to have to come up for the new building, should that go through, should that happen, right?
No, it'll just be extended. The parking won't come up. It'll just be extended to the east and to the north, and then there's access, there's cross-access to the north that's already there, ready for the access.
So you'll be able to fit the next building in that space that's left?
Yes.
That's, okay, so that's already?
We'll have to look, we'll have to look at the parking requirements for that building based on a square footage, so if there's not enough parking to support all of the buildings there, they won't be able to get the amount of square footage as shown on the plan.
Right, okay, all right.
Yeah, we've looked at all that, all the parking.
But there is a big parking field, this, you know, it's one big kind of office complex with multiple buildings, so a good portion of the parking, and they'll have to evaluate how effective that is. You'll see where the, on the south portion of the process and kind of front of the, you know, future development building there, that's where a good portion of the building will be over where the stormwater system now is. So overall, the site will have enough parking, but they'll have to look at how that gets distributed, so.
All right. Jeff, could you pull up the elevations once again? I'd like to talk about the elevation designs. This building will be viewed from all four sides. I think that's pretty much in agreement. You've got a very open area to the north, you're going to be viewing it from the south of Canton Center, and from the neighborhood to the west, obviously from the parking lot. So all four of these facades will be viewed. Why are two of them so terribly plain and lacking detail?
Well, they have nice window features. The one, the side that faces the residential is going to basically be screened by a berman planting, so you're not going to see that unless you're walking on that side. And then the backside.
Can you speak into the microphone, unfortunately?
Unfortunately, yeah, if you can just kind of describe it.
For the folks at home.
Side that'll be viewed from Canton Center Road, the east elevation has the feature on the roof.
Yeah, that one's got detail, right. I'm morally more concerned with the north and the west. I disagree with you on the west side. Everything gets seen in Canton, and so I just, I disagree with this idea that we can put less quality. I know that's not an access side, okay? So I'm not expecting doors and things like that, but just that roof, for example, you got, you've got a dormer on the comparable east elevation, but no dormer on the west elevation. You've got four dormers on the south elevation, but no dormers on the north elevation. I just feel as if Canton is being cheated by design elements when this happens. And I know we go through this time and time again about what's mainly seen and what's not, but I tell you right now, in my experience on this planning commission, ultimately, everything is seen and viewed, and we want Canton's to be the best. We want, we want, and I'm sure you want your facility to be the best as well. Is there something we can do to spruce those sides up? Those two sides, the north and the, and the west? Is that something that you can work on with staff? Some dormers, some dormers adding some stone?
Yeah, I mean, we could add more, we could add more dormers to the north elevation.
Okay.
Could look at that and the west.
The, what's?
It's, it's a very high-quality building. It's all brick.
No doubt, no doubt, not questioning that one bit. I just would like to see a little more design input on those two elevations. I just think that it deserves it, I really do. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels on this.
No, I agree with that. You know, there's the dental office to the north, and there's a driveway at the end of that that it could be expanded, right? Or there could be another development behind that.
Well, they could expand the building and?
Yeah.
And add more office in the north.
So it is visible, and it could be more visible if that gets extended, so.
We've got, we've got stone elements on the, on the north side, or south elevation. I see no reason why we can't add something to the north side, especially since you have that one big kind of blank area. I don't remember what the function is inside the building that doesn't need a window or windows there, but be that as it may, just, it needs something to make it pop. It just needs something. I'm not an architect, although we do have one on board here. I would like to see you work with staff on adding some detail.
It's the janitor's closet, the mechanical and electrical, and the staff toilet, so they don't need any.
You don't need a window.
They don't want to spruce that up.
I understand that, I understand that. You don't want, you don't need a window there, but is that possible that?
Yeah, well, we're willing to work with staff on adding some architectural elements.
All right, that's all I had. Commissioner Eggenberger?
Um, I think, oh, sorry. No, I think it looks good. I think that it, I always learn something at this meeting, and I did not realize that dermatology did hair transplants, so. I don't know if it's good to know or not, but it's interesting. I didn't know that's where you went.
They do a lot of things that I'm not aware of either.
Oh.
Days.
Yes, thank you. No, I don't have questions, but thank you for you brought up.
Kind of gets under your skin, right? Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions about the project. I agree with Chairman Green about kind of sprucing up the north and west elevations. I do agree that everything is pretty much seen in Canton, so I think that if applicant could work with staff on that, that would be ideal.
Sure.
Yep.
I think we're all pretty much in agreement. We like your design, we like, you know?
We just want it to?
Not offending me, I'm not the architect, so.
He's not here. Okay, well? Well, yeah, is there any comments from the, from the audience, any?
We can just, um, have that in mind.
If you want, you want to come up to the microphone? We don't, this is not a public hearing, but it's, we like to hear some comments.
My name's Dan Nicolai, live behind where this?
Okay, you're in Savannah, Savannah Point?
What's your address?
390 Savannah Drive.
Okay.
We learned about the planning from an email on Friday from one of our other homeowners that was just looking at the agenda and saw it, so we wanted to come and see.
Oh, okay. Just want to see what's going on.
Yeah, so we wanted to take a look. I know the first phase was in. I think there's some of the neighbors, I know there's, there's planting in there, they were hoping for a little denser planting, but we know, you know, there's growth forward. I want to make sure that they do tie the two together, because I know the end of the first one, there's been some drainage issues in that that?
Hmm, okay.
Addressed when they finished the berm. So those are some of the things, again, we just wanted to see.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Could you, could you do us a favor and fill out one of those forms that's up there?
Sure.
Okay, for the record?
Okay.
We'd appreciate that, yep. Yes.
As far as the plannings go, I would like to add that we did have more plannings in there. We had them so dense that Lee thought they were too dense that they wouldn't be able to mature and grow, so we took some out at the direction of the planning department, so.
Okay, all right, appreciate that, all right. Yep, anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, you can sit down and just put it back in the box when you're done. That'd be great, thanks.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Jeff, just, I'm just wondering, is there a way that we can, now, we have neighbors who came because they found out from an email, someone who looked at an agenda, is there a way that we can make sure that at least neighborhoods adjoining changes like this would be notified? Because I know we do it when there's new development, but for something like this?
Well, it's not a requirement.
I know, it's not a requirement, but can we, maybe a good practice?
Except if it's a public hearing, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's going to be a policy of the township board, you know, in terms of how, how much they want us to notify people. So essentially, you know, we post the agendas, you know, on the website, that's probably where their neighbors, you know, saw it. You know, if it's a public hearing, they get notification by mail, and an advertisement goes in the paper. If it's, if it's a permitted land use, they don't generally get notification. When a new project comes in, we generally do have them talk to the neighborhood, so at some point in time in the past, when they started this process, there was probably some discussion, you know, with the neighborhood regarding buffering and those kinds of things. I don't know how long ago that was, but there was probably some meeting at some point, you know, before they started bringing site plans in for the first phase.
Okay, I'll look at that, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we generally, we generally request that the developer do that when we think there's going to be an issue or there might be concerns with adjacent development, so that way the developer can sit down with the neighborhood, you know, not in a public meeting, so they can go over their plans and get, you know, you know, comments from the neighborhood, you know, to make sure their, your comments are addressed.
Okay, yeah, maybe if we look at just things, neighborhoods that are adjacent to even expansions.
So we like to put that burden on the developers instead of burdening the government with that purpose.
Yes, and it'd be a good suggestion from us, thanks.
Anyone else on the commission?
I'd like to make a motion.
Wait, just one, one quick thing. Jeff, so the other future development to the south, that, that's going to be self-encompassing in terms of parking requirements as well, so.
Yeah, we'll evaluate each one as they come in.
So, yeah, we, so?
You'll see it two more times.
Okay, all right. Just, I just, I get concerned in situations like this because there's no, there's no room for leakage in parking, and there's no room for you to park on Canton Center. So if these buildings are successful, which we all hope they will be, you don't want a situation where there just is not room to park. And so I'm hoping that the numbers work out as we go forward in this. So, okay, now with your motion.
Okay. I move to recommend approval of the site plan for Phase Two of HDDS, parentheses Canton Dermatology, Office Complex on Text Parcels as noted, as proposed.
Subject to, subject to?
Oh, subject to the, the additional upgrades to, yeah, thank you, to the west and, and north elevation? Yeah.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Bennett. Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Good luck. And they're next, they need to meet with the trustees.
Once they make the revisions to the architectural plans and get those final revisions into us, then we'll take it to the township board for site plan approval, so.
Okay, all right. Wish you success. Our next agenda item is the Canton Sharif Site Condominium. We're considering a preliminary site plan on property which is located west of Lilly between Palmer and Michigan Avenue. Patrick, could you tell us more?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The proposal before you this evening is to locate 10 detached, single-family residential site condominium units on 4.75 acres located on the west side of Lilly Road, just south of Palmer Road. It's roughly 300 to 400 feet south of the Palmer Road intersection. There is one cul-de-sac proposed into the site, and in general, the project meets the applicable design requirements of the condominium ordinance and the zoning ordinance. The site currently includes some overhead electric lines going north and south that are on the interior of the site. Those lines are proposed to terminate at the north site boundary and then go eastward to the Lilly Road right-of-way, at which point they would stay either in the right-of-way or just off the right-of-way in the utility easement. So those lines will be brought off the site and alongside the road. The site plan is a general site condominium. It's not a special land use, it's not a planned development, so there's no required public hearing. The site itself is located in the R3 Single Family Residential Zoning District, and the comprehensive plan, future land use classification, is medium to low-density residential, up to three dwelling units per acre. So the current zoning is consistent with the master plan. In our review for the access management and traffic impact, as I previously stated, the traffic will enter from Lilly Road through one proposed cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac length is about 485 feet, which is far less than the maximum of 1,000 feet for a cul-de-sac in Canton Township. For a project this size, a traffic impact study is typically not required because of the small scale, but generally, 10 single-family residential units will generally generate about 100 vehicle trips per day. The rate's about 10 trips per house, and that's for residents and all associated trips like deliveries and that sort of thing. In the review stages prior to the planning commission review, the township engineer and the fire department had reviewed the site plan and had approved the access. At this time, we're at preliminary site plan, so a lot of the final engineering types of details get handled between preliminary and final site plan review. Also, the connection to Lilly Road is subject to the Wayne County review, so Wayne County will review the permit for the connection to Lilly Road and will be the permitting agency for that connection. For the scheduled regulations, the 10 proposed units meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance for the minimum lot area, lot width, and the setbacks. At this time, there are no architectural plans proposed, but the plans do note that the homes will meet the minimum floor area requirements, which are 1,400 square feet with a basement and 1,600 square feet without a basement. So there is a viable building envelope on the plans. There are some illustrative building envelopes and driveways shown on the plan just to show how a single-family home could be viable. It's a little bit tighter as it gets farther west towards the end of the cul-de-sac, but there is a building envelope there, so some of those units might be a little bit smaller when they get to the architecture stages, but nevertheless, the lots do meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. At the time that they submit the building elevations, they will be required to meet the zoning ordinance for the brick and masonry requirements. And finally, with respect to the landscaping, a full landscape plan is included in the plans, and it meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance and the site condominium ordinance. The only change that needs to happen to the landscaping plan is that some of it is based on an older plan that shows the electric lines going through the site and being bisected by the, the electric line easement. With that line being moved out to Lilly Road, the landscape plan would have to be adjusted accordingly, but it wouldn't change any of the counts or anything like that, just the general layout of the plan itself, as well as reallocating the trees. That's something that we recommend taking place before the township board reviews the preliminary site plan. So with that, that concludes our report, and our recommendation is to recommend approval of the preliminary site plan, subject to submittal of an updated landscape plan prior to township board review of the preliminary site plan. And with that, we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Do you have a project sponsor here? Yes?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Muhammad Siddiqui, I'm from Anamta Engineering. We are the consultant engineers for the proposed development named Canton Sharif, located at 2006 Lilly Road, west of Lilly, between Palmer and Michigan Avenue. The proposed site consists of 4.75 acres. We are proposing a 10 single-family residential site condominium with the detention pond located in front of the, of the site along with the west right-of-way line of Lilly Road. The lot size varies from 12,816 square feet to 13,873 square foot, and the building envelope varies from 3,477 square foot to 4,546 square foot. There is an existing DTE overhead electric line located near the front of the site. Therefore, we are proposing to relocate this overhead electrical line to the north and east property line of the site along, following the west Lilly Road right-of-way. Due to the proposed relocation of DTE overhead electric line, the lot layout line for lot number one through six has been, have been slightly readjusted on the plan, but not yet been updated on submitted landscaping plan. Updated landscaping plan will be submitted for the township board review.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Commissioner Bennett, what do you think about this, this plan?
Well, I like that, you know, it's not necessarily going to impact traffic too much. I know Lilly can be kind of busy at certain times during the day. I don't see any, any issues with it, and I don't have any questions at this point.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes, I don't have any questions yet, but we will get a, another site to just see what they look like and, and have information on that, right? They'll come back with that.
Final.
Yeah, this is just the layout of it, yeah. Yeah, I think it's, it looks good, thank you.
They explained that future information is coming. I was hoping to see some plan views of the typical house plan and some elevations, et cetera, et cetera. You know, we're very concerned with how the houses are going to look and whatnot, so we look forward to.
And that's something you may not get back at final site plan either, because they may not have a builder available at that time. So this is not a PDD where you normally get preliminary architecturals, so this is just a standard site condo with lots. So, you know, we have no idea what they're going to build on these sites at this point, because they may sell off the lots to, you know, a builder, you know, and build individual homes. They may have one builder build them all, we don't know.
So we, our approval tonight is just approving the, the site condo concept for this?
The preliminary site plan for the condominium.
So?
Site condominium is just like a subdivision with private rows. There are no house plans. They're showing you building envelopes and lot sizes that meet the requirements. You don't get many developments that aren't associated with planned developments. When we have a planned development, usually we request more information on what they're going to build, but they don't know what they're going to build yet, so.
Okay.
All you're doing is, is basically approving the layout of the site condo.
You know that they're, they will be single detached?
Yeah, they're single-family homes on individual sites within a site condominium.
And we, they did show the lot layout, so they do show a building envelope to see how the front yard? how the front yard, rear yard, and side yard setbacks would work, and how they can fit a conforming house on those lots. So it'll have to abide by the setbacks that are shown on the plan. That would be baked in.
I mean, the footprints may not look nothing like this when the builder comes in and decides, but the building footprint is basically shown by the setbacks on the lot. So they can build anything within that boundary that meets the minimum requirements and meets the 50 percent brick requirement and the other design requirements in the code.
So, okay, so the codes that would apply to this are not, not, we don't have the same leeway as we would if it was a PDD, in other words.
Well, he's not asking for any modifications like they are in a PDD, so this house would have to be 50 percent brick, have the four-foot offset in the back, and meet those general requirements that we have in the, in the requirement, in the zoning code for any, any lot and any normal subdivision, so.
All right. Commissioner Zubor?
I'm all set.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Thank you. This is actually my neighborhood, and I drive by it all the time, so I do have a couple of questions. Um, so there's a farmhouse there, as you know, and it's going to be, there's going to be a demolition, I see that. Also, what about sidewalks? And Jeff, you might have to answer this. I know there's no sidewalks, or, I'm sorry.
Uh, there are sidewalks that will be required along Lilly Road, as well as interior sidewalks along the entire length of the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
So they might be a little hard to see, but they, they do have them on the plan. So all frontages of all roads, including Lilly Road and the cul-de-sac, will have sidewalks.
Also, really close to Woodwind Court there. So would that be an increase? I mean, there's houses there, so would you increase the buffer there, or would it not? I mean, what would you do?
Have lots buttoned up to lots, so there's no specific buffer requirement between single-family.
Also, would we, because it's a new development, require, ask them to meet with the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors?
No, I mean, this is R3 to R3. It's residential to residential. Well, you have, it's right adjacent to Woodwind Estates, so it's not really any different than Woodwind Estates. So Woodwind Estates is right adjacent to it.
That big farm behind them, though.
Well, we have a lot of those individual parcels along Lilly Road. I get calls every day where a lot of those long, deep lots to the south of here are trying to be consolidated with, with individual cul-de-sacs. So this is a little bit wider and less deep parcel than some of the other ones that go all the way back to the ISTC corridor. The other parcels further south are basically not wide enough on their own to be split, so they have to be consolidated. So you'll see additional plans in here later this year for more activity along Lilly Road.
You know, I, you wouldn't see something like this be consolidated with any of the surrounding areas.
No, it's, it's pretty much freestanding, because it's right adjacent to Woodwind Estates. You've got some parcels to the north that are facing Lilly, are facing Palmer Road, I think, so.
Okay. Commissioner Ocharia?
Uh, yeah. I had a question about the electrical lines, Patrick, is, for you. How does it work? You know, the, the moving of the electric lines, is it a seamless process? You know, is, is it a done deal, or, you know, they could be denied?
Well, that would be up to DTE, for DTE to review it, so they would have to contact DTE. They would have to get a permit, and most likely, the applicant would have to pay to have that relocation done. So DTE would have to approve the, the relocation area, the method, as well as any new easements that, that might occur. And that's something that would generally take place between preliminary and the final site plan. So if, if they are approved for preliminary and they come back for final, by the time they come back for final, they must have their engineering complete. They must have everything complete with DTE. And if for some reason the electric line is not where it's shown on the preliminary plan, then we look at it to see if it's consistent with the preliminary plan, or if there's any other modifications that have to be made to the plan.
Okay, so we.
Really, it's really up to DTE to design the relocation of the line to meet their design standards, engineering standards, because there's guy wires and things that'll have to be done based on the 90-degree angles for the shifts of the lines in and out, so.
Could they possibly come back and say that they, they can't do it, or they, they think right now the, the way it is, is the best way to go about it, rather than shift? Have you had such situations in the past?
Um, everyone is a little bit different, so it's sometimes hard to see what DTE will do, because they look at the broader electric system. If, for some reason, DTE would not allow that to happen, and the easement had to go through the site, they would have to redesign the site to both meet DTE's requirements and meet the zoning ordinance and condominium ordinance. So whether they could get the full 10 lots there, we would have to look at and make sure those requirements are met.
Okay, that wasn't my question. Thank you.
Yeah, DTE standard policies, whenever possible, move the line to the road.
Okay.
They don't generally like, you know, they have some, historically, some lines in deep right-of-way is what they call them. They like to move those lines to the right-of-way so they get easy access to them from a maintenance standpoint.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of how you design the shift and the jogs, you know, where it's at and where it has to go and where it has to come back out. So I just, I brought up the aerial, Anne Marie, to show you that, you know, to the south and to the west, we've got Woodwind Estates, so you have lots already to the south, and you've got a detention pond to the west, and then to the north, you've already got fairly narrow lots that go out to Palmer Road. So the width of these lots will be similar to the widths of those lots, even those, those are deeper. So it actually, you know, kind of dovetails pretty neatly into that existing development pattern in there. So it should be fairly consistent with the existing development patterns and lot sizes and widths that are already there. These lots are a little bit wider than, than a standard 80, than a standard R3 lot, so.
Could there be a minimum size requirement? Like you said, in some of the corners, it's a little bit tight. So if we, we have to get smaller, is there a minimum that?
Well, they might have to be, not, the house may be designed so it's not quite so deep, but maybe wider, because the, the lot is a little bit shallower than it is north and south of the road. So they'll have to design a house to fit, so.
Architects come in handy.
Yes, and we.
Um, Patrick. So, and looking at Google Maps, I see that there's quite a bit of, of greenery around the peripheral of this rectangle. None of that would have to be messed with, right?
Um, that's a good point. There are a lot of trees on the site that are proposed to be removed, and a lot of them are regulated trees. The landscape plan that is proposed by the applicant puts a lot of those replacement trees along the perimeter of the site. So a lot of the proposed lots there would have a lot of replacement trees planted along the rear perimeter of their yard. So even though there wouldn't be any open space in the rear yard, per se, there would be some of the required replacement trees planted in that rear yard perimeter. And so the landscape plan does account for the trees that will be removed as part of the project.
Okay.
When you, when you deal with subdivisions and site condos of this size, in order to get rear yard utilities in and degrade the lots, you generally have to remove most of what's there in order to get it to grade and drain properly.
Yeah. I was just looking at it and, and realizing, wow, you know, we've already got some buffering, you know, in place.
We're concerned a little bit with the placement of his replacement trees, because he's, where he's got them shown would be in a utility easement, and he may have to bring those trees forward to the utility easement to allow for the electric utilities in the rear yard and for the drainage in the rear yard. So he, he may have to pull those trees forward to that utility easement, but we'll, we'll see that on the final plan.
And that detention pond, is that a dry pond technology, or is it wet? Is it going to have constant water in it?
Um, should be wet. He's got a, he's got a four bay and a, a permanent water storage area.
Yeah, it states detention pond, but ultimately, when Wayne County reviews it, they'll be the reviewing authority in terms of how it's designed and how much water it holds.
Okay. I always like the ones that hold water, because you can put the little spritzer thing in there.
Yeah, the first bay, the, the four bay is in the one in the back. The permanent water one is closest to the road. You can see the permanent water level, shown in the darker line there.
Yeah, okay.
That will, usually holds four feet of water.
All right, that's all I have. Do I hear a motion from anyone?
I move to recommend approval of the preliminary site plan for Canton Sharif, which includes 10 single-family residential site condominium units on 4.7 acres, located on tax parcel number 102-99-0003-000. Subject to submittal of an updated landscape plan prior to township board review of the preliminary site plan.
Could you repeat that? I couldn't quite, quite get all of it.
Start from the beginning.
Yeah, Anne Marie said support.
That can.
Ah, did she now?
I did.
She did.
All right. I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Graham Hudak. Any further discussion? Hearing none, scene none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the roll plea, or the vote, please?
Certainly Commissioner Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Ocharia.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, sir.
Yep.
Okay. And the next step for this project?
He needs to get the revised landscape plan into Patrick, and then we'll schedule to the, for the township board at their next available meeting.
Awesome. All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Boy, do we have some stuff, some work to send to staff. We have the VA Community Outpatient Clinic, which we've seen a couple of times already. We've got Fillmore Place. We've got Ford Road Home Depot Outlet. We've got Sahara, I guess I'm going to pronounce it, no, it's.
Sahara Teiba.
Or Sajara. Uh, Teiba Private School. We have Home Depot Michigan Avenue Seasonal Sales, and we've got Lowe's Seasonal Sales. To send to staff, do I hear a motion to do that?
So moved.
Support.
All right, got a motion to send those to staff by Commissioner.
Which means you need to see it next month, right?
Pardon?
Which means you see it next month.
And support by Commissioner Bennett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We, we have a public hearing to set for April 6th, consisting of the Wellington on the Willow PDD Amendment, the Fillmore Place Final PDD, and the Meadows of Canton Minor PDD. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved. Support.
We've got a motion to set that April 6th public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We will have a full agenda in April. There's three public hearings. I already have three seasonal sales, plus whatever site plans may come up.
Oh, good.
So what's going to happen in the Fort, the Home Depot Outlet?
Dinner.
Another Hayden's-type building.
Another what?
Another Hayden's-type building.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. Any, anything to talk about? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I would like to move to adjourn. But no one wants to support.
The vote.
You scared me here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, folks.